How are you?
Good. Melody Baker is absent.
We anticipate Melody being here at 9:30.
Okay. Ken Gruley.
Here.
Len Lanningham.
Here.
Mandalau.
Here.
Candace Morrison.
Here.
Carrie Phillips.
Here.
Jeff Prestone.
Here.
Cameron Lloyd is excused.
So, a forum being present, I'll call the meeting to formal order and we'll start with our introductions and then I'll give the game plan for what we're doing. So, let's see. Hi.
Good morning. My name is Ari Plana of the COGJ. And Jennifer Morrison, Vice President for our negotiations.
Hi, good morning. Eric Williams, Vice President. Aaron Moran, David G. Backhouse.
Jeff Stone, Chair of the Board.
Carrie Phillips, Secretary of the Board.
Candace Morrison, Trustee.
Ken Gruley, Trustee.
Lanningham, Trustee.
Mandalau, Trustee.
I'm in as a guy, President.
All right, folks.
Lynn Krakowak, Pro vice office.
Lynn is taking over for her day off because day was out for today. Thank you.
Welcome.
Bob D'Amone, Assistant Director of the President.
Nick Sutter, your IT.
All right, a small intimate group. We know each other well. And on the screen, I see, who do I see? I think I saw Bill Ruder.
Good morning, everyone. Nice to see you all.
Hi, Bill. Good morning. And who else is with us?
Leslie.
Leslie Ortiz-Fogg, okay. Hi, Leslie.
Good morning.
And who is RG? Bob D'Amone. Yeah, okay.
But we're still waiting for Jeff.
Jeff Switek, I think will be joining. Okay. Here's, thanks, everybody, and happy Easter season to everyone. What we're going to do today is go into executive session first, get a briefing for the purpose, essentially, of discussing our ongoing collective bargaining negotiations with the FFCC and the AA ECC. And we'll get a briefing on that. And then we'll come out of executive session and we will take up our regular meeting. We have some action items. But of course, the most significant item today is the adoption of our budget. There'll be a lot more, you know, discussion about the budget, but the early look is we're very pleased with the budget and that we're going to be very proud to send this budget over to the county. So, let's, if we can, have a motion to go please into executive session for the purpose stated.
Still moved.
You got it? Second?
Second.
Thank you, Karen. All in favor?
All right. Bye.
Thanks, folks. We'll let you know right away. And sorry for the problem last month.
I'm only on one, but I do work for some others.
Oh yeah.
There's some.
So we're back from executive session and I'll report for the record that the discussion centered around the ongoing negotiations with collective bargaining units and some pending potential litigation. So no formal action was taken during that executive session, but in outside the agenda, I want to ask for a motion as we did last month to extend through June 30th, the operating agreement between the college and the foundation in light of recent discussions that I've had with the chair of the foundation and some scheduled meetings. So if I could have a motion to that effect.
Same.
Thank you Mel. And second, Ken? All in favor?
Aye.
The operating agreement is extended through June 30th with other steps to be taken in the interim. Now we get to the additional formal part of our agenda. We've called an order, we've had our executive session. Really excited to be here today. I wish actually more people were here because there's so much positive news in terms of the budget, South Campus and so forth. So without further ado, I want to start with action items and as always, we'll start with the approval of minutes from March 27th. I've read them, always terrific, no taking any comments on those. If not, a motion approved.
So much.
Thank you. Mel, second carry, all in favor?
Aye.
They're approved. For the board's action, we'll turn this to Mr. Crewley, Chair of our Budget Audit and Facilities Committee. Obviously, the budget is huge there, Ken. We have three resolutions relating to the budget and then we've got several other things not related to the budget, but please go ahead.
Asking Arda to join us at the table. The first item is the draft budget. It, I've seen a few budgets over the years and this is a very, very good budget. It's well balanced, it's based on fact, and we have a structurally balanced budget, which we're not depending on fund balance, which college has done for a number of years. It's actually projecting a small surplus if the year plays out the way we listed it. So I like the way it's put together. It includes a four-year plan that I think is very realistic because some things will happen. We'll eventually start collecting less than interest, which is a source of revenue for us now. We're going to lose the rental income sooner or later for the South Campus, but that's included in the four-year plan and it's well presented. So I am very happy to recommend it to the board. And Arda, do you have any further comments you want to make about it?
Yes, absolutely. No, thank you for having me today and honestly, this budget wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for so many folks involved, including Dr. Tsagai and her leadership this past year and Bill Ruder, of course, as my number one supporter and the Board of Trustees Jeff and Ken always happy to talk things through. I've actually prepared like a little summary of what I thought I was going to say for the budget, but you've done a wonderful job covering it. Just like a brief overview of the 2425 budget. I believe that this is the first time in over a decade where we've seen enrollment grow. I truly think that it's thanks to the student-centered efforts, the new initiatives that we have taken and the new focus on retention as Dr. Tsagai always is covering. Despite an overall decrease, when you look at the charts, there's an overall 20% decrease from 2021. Current total FTEs are projected to roughly grow 3% compared to prior year and 9% better than the actual budget for 2425. That's roughly 6,500 FTEs. We also have built an anticipated growth for 2526 of roughly 2% and we're expecting roughly 6,600, over 6,600 FTEs. I think it's super important to highlight some achievements actually that Dr. Tsagai has covered just this past year. NICE Ed approved our One College Approach. This is to improve our student experience and align the services that we provide. We leased 50 Cobham Drive to support South Campus redevelopment. We have invested in onboarding, advising and scheduling, which is helping our students stay on track. We brought more workday ERP functions in-house, reducing consultant costs. Our 2528 strategic plan is underway. We are focusing on boosting retention, closing equity caps and aligning programs with workforce needs. Financially, we have turned things around, moving from $1.6 million projected use of fund balance to hopefully a $6 million surplus and that is thanks to high enrollment, tighter spending and keeping costs low for our students by actually freezing the tuition, removing registration fees in 2425, as well as we've reduced late fees, we've reduced collection fees. And now turning to the 2526 budget overview, we are proposing a balanced budget of $89.4 million. There is no use of fund balance, no tuition increases besides the nursing test fee, which is a direct cost for the course. Students receive services from the vendor and we actually help students by charging them by semester instead of up fronting the costs. And those that are eligible for financial aid, the Title IV grants cover it. Revenues are projected at $90.6 million. That is 5% better than the 2425 budget and relatively flat of where I think we are going to end come 8/31/25. Tuition and fees, they make up 43% of total operating revenue currently are projected to be at $38.8 million. Again, this is better than current year budget by 13% and 2% by current actual projections. State aid makes up about 31% at $28.5 million. Included in this number, it's the rental aid we are expecting for 50 Cobham come next fall. Erie County support, it's at $19.8 million and this reflects a consistent local support. Other revenues as always, the chargebacks, rentals, interest, they are expected to fluctuate but remain modest within our budget. Total expenses for the 2526 budget are at $89.4 million. This is up 2%, roughly $1.6 million of over 2425 budget and 6% or $5 million over projected actuals. Salaries and benefits, as we know, make up 80% of total operating expenses. Salaries are projected to be at $47.3 million and this is due to step increases within the bargaining agreements and 2% more than current budget. Built in are 523 full-time positions and we've also included 15 vacancies at $750,000. ASME and CSCA contracts, as you know, are settled. However, FFCC and AACC negotiations are still ongoing. The budget does exclude potential impacts that may arise from these unions. Benefits are roughly 48% of total salaries and currently budgeted at $22.7 million. Contractual expenses in equipment are fixed costs and make up 20% of total operating budget. Included is a $500,000 spending constraint. I went a little low because of the unknowns with the South location, we may have some additional costs. Capital requests, as far as capital requests, we've requested $10 million in capital requests from the county and SUNY to support the facilities master plan, the sports field and also to build a new salt barn. The fund balance projections, we have a healthy fund balance for now. At end of 8/31/24, the fund balance was at $35.5 million. This is 43% of total operating expenses. We are projecting to grow this for this year at $41.5 million, that's a 49%. And it's due, let's remember that these funds, although they seem significant, they are truly because we have received significant amounts in federal stimulus funds. We've made aggressive reductions and of course, it's always nice to see that enrollment is performing better, but in the future years, it's somehow flattened out. So for me, this is like a bit of a concern and always on more of a cautious approach when we think about our fund balance. The board did designate $15 million to strategic priorities like payroll costs, deferred maintenance and technology upgrades. And to close all this, I believe that SUNY is on a stronger footing than it's been in a while. Enrollment is rising, the budget is balanced and student support is certainly improving. And I hope that we are building a long-term success plan for our students, the community and everything that we have to provide. And I'm open to any questions and I hope I haven't confused anyone.
No, good job, Arda. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks for that great report.
Great presentation.
Both in writing, which we've read and verbally. Ken, do you want to add anything after hearing Arda's presentation?
No, I am very happy with the document. There's a lot of hard work, Arda and her staff, Dr. Tsagai providing the leadership with all of the other departments contributing to putting together a good document, getting the enrollment going in the right direction. So we're in good shape right now.
We're very grateful to all that have been mentioned, Bill Ruder as well, and I know it's been right at your side for quite some time. I don't think I've ever been more proud to send a particular budget to the Erie County Executive and the Legislature. This really shows progress. Dr. Tsagai, you should be taking a bow. This is really, really special to see that we are reversing the enrollment, we've relocated our South location campus and in a way that just is spectacular. I think this is where I may be preempting my own chair report, but yesterday I went to the South Campus location on 50 Cobham Drive and I was, I expected to be pleased, but I was stunned with how fantastic that property is turning out to be for our students, our staff and our faculty. I, Dr. Tsagai personally escorted me through with, with a wonderful tour. You will not believe the size of these restrooms. One immediate reaction. Very good. And the classroom space, the library, the lounge, this is going to be a spectacular improvement for our students and we can all be so proud and Dr. Tsagai in particular for spearheading this particular initiative to right-size our college here in the South towns, maintain a presence here and just create a wonderful atmosphere and environment for students that will not only please our current students but attract and retain them, but attract new students. I can't, we happened to be touring with, was it Courtney?
Courtney.
Yesterday from our staff who's not all that recently, pretty recently graduated from Fredonia and she almost has the perspective of a current college student. Dr. Tsagai and I were asking her her impressions as we walked around and it was, oh yeah. It's exciting. Thank you Courtney.
May I just say something real quick, Jeff?
Yes.
Just in regards to certainly the budget, but I really want to take the moment to thank our students for choosing SUNY Erie. Our students have a lot of option in the area, including online, I say this. So thank you to our students for constantly choosing SUNY Erie. I also want to take a moment because this budget cannot happen without all these people. The faculty and staff have been really in line with us and really working through all this to get us to where we need to be. So thank you to our union faculty and staff. I also want to thank all of our union leadership because we have four unions and I have to tell you, working with the union leadership to really work through to get us to the point that we are in regards to our budget. Our county exec and the legislator of the county exec, to thank them. SUNY led by a chancellor who has been instrumental with a lot of grant to support all community colleges, but certainly SUNY Erie and certainly the state with respect to our governor who also put a lot of focus on community college by way of supporting us. So I think for us, while we are doing a lot of things internally, we also do get a tremendous support externally to get us to where we are. So I just wanted to make sure we point that out. But and lastly, Arda and Bill, thank you for really working hard to also put this together and represent us well. So thank you. And our board, of course. Thank you. Thank you for your leadership.
Your points on the external support is important. The state has gone way out of its way to make sure we are protected by that floor and additionally sent us money to help with retention and student services. And of course, our county partners, the legislature and the county executive have been very supportive. We meet with county executive and his staff monthly and he's very interested in what's going on here at SUNY Erie and very pleased with some of the steps that have been taken to stabilize and increase enrollment and to right-size our South location.
Thank you.
Can I just add one more thing? The state budget is not approved as of yet, as of this moment, so any fluctuations that may happen there are not incorporated in our current budget. Also like a minor error on page eight of the president's message, unfortunately, there's a minor error where I put, where there's a percent sign instead of an M sign for a dollar figure.
Okay, no problem.
And it's under the fund balance that I was correct.
I wanted to know it. Minor, minor. Full transparency.
Now, as you all know, the selection of a president is the most important job that we have and I would say the second most important, but equally important is to make sure that we have a proper budget each year for the college and well thought out. I think we've hit a home run on both. But I want to make sure that we formally adopt these resolutions because these are ones that go to the county and I have to certify that we did it. So if I ask your indulgence, I've got to actually, because this came to us outside of committee, I have to make sure that this resolution is read and passed. It's very important. So we're going to start, there are three resolutions. We've got the maintenance of effort, which I'll make sure I can find that one. We're adopting a budget and we're approving a tuition and fee schedule. So the first one has to do with the budget and I'll paraphrase the whereas's. Whereas we're committed to manage ourselves in a responsible manner. We've faced significant enrollment declines and about 80% of our revenue is historically derived from enrollment. We have continued challenges, but we've stabilized. We're dedicated to addressing the needs of our students. We've embarked on a strategic plan update focusing on student success, diversity, equity and belonging. We have secured a lease for 50 Cobham and will support expanded facilities and services for students there. We've initiated an RFP to reallocate resources at the South Campus to better serve students. We're proactively adjusting staffing levels to align with other current, with current enrollment levels and we're continuing to expand co-enrollment presence in the local high schools. Further, whereas, we are continuing to expand and improve online programming in response to student requests. We've increased our efforts in building community partnerships. We have allowed, this has all allowed us to provide significant educational opportunities to thousands of individuals in Erie County at a reasonable cost, a very reasonable cost. I think it was certainly mentioned, but we are, we ought to reiterate, we are not raising tuition and we have not done so for the last three years. I think this year in particular, with the uncertainty coming out of the federal government as to the Department of Education, Student Services and the like, this is not the time for us to be putting any additional burden on our students. We reached that consensus quite some months ago as we began thinking about the budget. Budget, of course, has been discussed in great length in the Budget Committee prior to this meeting and circulated to all of us. to this meeting and circulated to all of us. So we are therefore resolving that although policy states that SUNY Erie's undesignated fund balance shall not be expended earmarked or otherwise designated without approval of the board. The current financial uncertainties have over the past several years caused the college to plan to utilize undesignated fund balance. We've known this. As it turned out, we did plan to do that last year but did not need to. The 1.6 that we had budgeted did not need to be expended. So while this is the first year we have not budgeted use of fund balance, we did not use fund balance last budget year either. So be it further resolved that the SUNY Erie Board of Trustees and SUNY Erie will continue to review and analyze its fiscal operations, seeking opportunities to increase revenues and reduce expenses. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees will seek to work with Erie County, this New York State, and local business community to identify opportunities to better utilize SUNY Erie as the recognized leader in workforce development. And be it finally resolved that upon approval of the SUNY Erie Board of Trustees, a copy of this resolution will be forwarded to the Erie County Executive. And then we have other resolutions. I'm going to have a vote on these as a body, all of them. This one is short. To whom it may concern, we have a resolution that the Erie County Community College relates to what I just had, all the resolved clauses. This is the actual resolution. College operating budget for the fiscal year commencing 9/125 and ending 8/31/26 of $89,416,103 is approved. That is our resolution that I'll be asking you to vote on. Further, there's a second resolution that the circulate, resolved that the Board of Trustees of our college hereby approve the tuition and fee schedule for the fiscal year commencing 9/125 and ending 8/31/26 as attached and circulated. And we do have a maintenance of effort resolution, and I'm just searching for that one because it was, well, let's take a vote on those two. And if Dr. Sagai, you can dig out, or I know Gail is not here this week, so let's vote on the budget and the tuition and fee schedule. And with all the discussion having been held, a motion to approve?
Subpoena.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're very pleased to send this on, Dr. Sagai, to the county. Hold the maintenance of effort. I just want to find it and make sure I can read it, and I can do that while we're doing some other reports, because this came outside of committee. And by the way, these three resolutions are the same ones that we adopt every spring when we send it to the Legislature. These are not new. Back to the agenda for a minute. We have a couple more action items, Ken, out of the Budget Committee.
Yeah, I don't have my details on these things, so I'm going to be looking for Arda or Dr. Sagai for further information. The student activity fee allocation is just the decision of which organizations within the college, the student organizations are getting what portions of the fee. Is that a collect interpretation?
I believe those are the fees, the life fee and the activity fee that supports student activities, and it's managed by ASC. I believe the students take a vote annually on if we propose any fee increases, but in this case, we have not proposed any fee increases for the students.
Want to just go through all of these separately, Jeff, and then vote on that?
Yes, yes.
The Buffalo Motor Car Extension, we discussed previously, there was some discussion about alternatives to that, but in the meantime, we're going with the agreement that we've had in place.
That is correct. Yeah, that is correct.
The agreement on the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, the Career Center is just a continuation of a program that has been in existence for several years. And the fifth item, disposal of materials, is some very old vehicles and some other piece of equipment at the south campus, three old vehicles, so very minor things. All of the materials have been fully depreciated. So I would, I would move for the approval of the items two, three, four, and five on the, on the action items.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those are passed. Informational items, Ken?
Supplier report, there's nothing of any major concern in there, and it has been provided to the full board. The ASC financials, we've discussed that they're doing well compared to budget, and I think that there's, there's nothing that really requires any attention there. Dr. Sagai have any comments about the ASC stuff, but I, I'm fine with that.
No comment. I think we're moving forward.
The, the audit, we went through previously, had a presentation by the auditors. Everything is in order. It's a, it's a good audit. It's a clean audit. There's no weaknesses or deficiencies found in the document, and so that, that's just continuing what, what's been going on in the past with several years with that. Item six, the financial statement, as of August 31st. Arda, any comment on that?
No, pretty much we've covered it. We are looking at a healthy fiscal year even this year, both in revenues and expenses, both revenues over budget and expenses under budget, so nothing major to report.
Facilities, Paul is not here today. I don't know if there's anything you want to talk about?
Thanks.
James?
Do you want to come up to?
Yes, please. Yes, please. Thank you.
So as Chair Stone mentioned, 50 Cobham, that's one of the, kind of the, the big project that we have going on, that is currently on schedule. Both myself and Mitch Rojek from Maintenance have been taking faculty and staff on tours of the facility over the course of the last month, month and a half, to get their input and, you know, make adjustments as, as needed within the scope of what we're able to do. So that is, that is on schedule. We've had listening sessions with students and faculty, sent out a survey for them to pick the furniture and some of the accent wall finishes. President didn't really trust me with those choices. I don't, I don't understand that, but you know, that's okay.
They were great. Absolutely great.
Yeah, yeah, so, so that, that's kind of the update as it pertains to 50 Cobham. Some of the other projects that we have going on, the big one, the sports field that we were hoping to have kind of the groundbreaking, already haven't occurred, obviously has not happened yet. So hopefully, whatever needs to be finalized between the county and contractors will be taken care of in the next week or so. And then the intent is to have a groundbreaking ceremony to kind of really, you know, show that we're here, and we're doing things on one of the biggest intersections in the, in the county, so.
It really is. Yeah, that's one of the most prominent intersections around.
Yeah, so that'll be, that'll be very exciting for the college.
I'm excited. Every time I drive down that and I'll see like kids playing soccer, it's definitely like, it's a, it's a, I think this is going to be great, another way to really promote ECC and the resources we have.
Right, and a revenue generating opportunity, right? I mean, I kind of look at the facility as being somewhat with what we have with Flickinger and the pool.
Yeah, good analogy.
So I think there's a lot of potential there. So yesterday, I'll just kind of give an update, campus community listening in. We had some work, some prep work being done for the work in our spring student center, and the contractor in the basement actually nicked one of the, the main feed lines, which caused power outages throughout the campus. Most of the buildings are on, other than the spring student center, which will be on later on today. So the, the spring student center will be closed for the entire day, and an update will be coming out, hopefully that, you know, will be back to normal operations tomorrow. Special shout out to Maintenance. They were, we were here till 10:30 last night, kind of walking through the buildings. Unexpectedly, one of the pump houses, I don't know the terminology here, you know, we just grabbed mops and started mopping stuff because there was some flooding up. So we did that for about an hour. There was no, you know, they didn't complain, they didn't do anything, they kept a good sense of humor, which is big for me. And so, so yeah, a big shout out to the facilities team, not just here, but, but across the campus, because it's, it's those things that people don't really see that, that make this a place where people want to be.
Just to add to that, I think in addition to that yesterday happening, there's a lot of things happening here. I don't know if you noticed as you were walking, one of the things I want to highlight is there's banners outside when you come in that you can see SUNY Erie. That was not the case. These things matter for us, so we are really working hard to make sure that the building is presented well for our students, for our faculty and staff, for our visitors, and make it, and so they've been doing a lot of work, and you'll see here and then as well as in the other buildings. It's also important to note that S Building is where our cafeteria, that's where the food, as I will mention a little bit later, a listening session without, with all of our students, the main focus is food for our students, really. It's food, the type of food, the pricing of the food, you know, accessibility to the food and having that, and so that is a big piece for our students. And so with this one having some emergency today, James and the team have worked out so that we have some pizza or other food available for our students over here today in the STEM building, is that correct?
Correct.
In the STEM building, so that they have some food available. It makes it very difficult for students to go out here. There's not a whole lot of restaurants or places for them to go, so we will certainly have that for them today. And so thank you for your leadership, and I can't say enough about our facility folks and our campus safety as well. And I do get those calls at 10 o'clock at night, and the rest of us got it twice yesterday at 10:30, and making sure that our faculty, in the S Building, we have our culinary as well as our, our dental hygiene, and then an art, fine arts is there, so we were able to communicate with those departments and those faculty to address that. And then the staff that were, that worked out of the S Building, we relocated them appropriately, so you saw probably some of the staff over here working. So we definitely are nimble. We adjust appropriately to things happening, and it does happen, and that is one of our strengths. So again, just to thank the college leadership as well.
On that front, James, thank you for, I know you've done a ton of work out at Cobham Drive. It's been exciting to see that develop. I can't believe how quickly it has developed. It's really, when you go there, and I'm urging all my fellow trustees, just call up Dr. Sagai and she'll escort you through, it, it's just, or James will, it's just spectacular. And I know you've been on it night and day, special project, you know, essence of a special project. And I want to remember the name of our, was it Nick yesterday who took us around?
Oh, Rich. Rich, Rich. Rich is great.
Nick was fantastic. Talk about building grounds. He's been over there working Saturdays nights. It's fantastic.
Yes, he is, absolutely. Very proud.
We had a lovely, lovely visit. All right, so that was.
Thank you.
We're still in Ken's list, I think, of informational items.
Well, number nine, presentation of the budget, which we've gone through, and then number 10 is just the minutes of our past meetings.
Is this maintenance of effort, or is it included? Oh, it's included, okay. Item informs me that the maintenance of effort that in the past has been a separate resolution is included in the overall budget adoption resolution. So we've done the two that we need to. Ken, does curriculum, student success?
Yes, so we have one, we did not meet in, what month are we in? We didn't meet in April, we didn't meet in March, but we do have one item received outside of committee. Erickson, could you, could you speak on this? And while he's, he's coming up, I think it's appropriate in this section, you know, just anecdotally also hearing within the community how student centered it is to come to ECC SUNY Erie now, just really positive things hearing out within the community, and I think that's again, a testament to your leadership, but also the college as a whole, so. But back to business. Erickson, if you could speak about the item that we have.
Thank you, Trustee Morrison. I believe this is a permit with Buffalo State University for continuance for allowing us to be able to hold our graduation ceremony at their facility, which is coming up here in May. Really exciting opportunity to be able to see the fruit of all of our efforts here at the school, to see that student success and empowerment.
And do we need a vote on this item? Is this a?
I think it's informational only.
Okay.
There is not a vote that is needed for being able to continue to do this.
Great.
Thank you.
Not to speak out of school, but I think since we're talking about student success and diversity, there's a lot of mixed signals around the country right now. DEI, I don't want to personally see it turned into some kind of a bad word, and speaking personally as Chair, and I think speaking for fellow trustees, we will resist efforts to in any way diminish what we view as an important value at the college, which is the continuation of efforts to be inclusive and equitable and diverse. I'll just say that.
Thank you for that statement. I think that it is so important that leaders at this, in this moment, that they, that they make those statements so that people feel comfortable with, you know, the environment that we've had, so I personally appreciate that.
I think the governor has made that clear as well, as she's been there for.
Yes, I applaud her leadership on that.
She's done a good job.
Len, well, you have the floor, anything on the marketing front?
In terms of marketing, we didn't meet. Angelica, is there anything you want to report?
Well, let's see here, we've been doing a lot, I don't know if you guys have seen, we have additional billboards placed on the Chippewa Delaware, really highly visible. And then we also are working with the NFTA to promote our micro credentials, because we have micro credentials, Grant. And with that, we're doing NFTA must shelter wraps, the big ones, that do fit in that particular budget line, and those are in high visibility areas, one in front of City Hall, one in front of the Gallery and Mall, we have one in front of GEICO, so that's a good one to catch folks who are there, who might be thinking of, hey, maybe I want to upscale, maybe I want to, you know, apply for one of those micro credentials. We're also doing, I can just go on, we're talking so much, we're also doing a special promotion for our transfer success, our transfers partnerships that we have with Buff State and UPE. We're working on a video series that should be coming out early next week, and in addition to that, we had a few ads that pushed out that message as well.
We appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Important member of Dr. Sagai's team, and when you see enrollment, it can be like the Titanic. It doesn't happen overnight, but a thousand efforts like the ones you talked about, Dr. Sagai's talked about, that we've talked about for months and years here, eventually do bear fruit, and I think we're seeing that. Let's see, over to Carrie, please, for, oh, sorry, Mel, policy and governance. Last month, you took a policy out of your committee, but do you have anything this month?
No, I don't have anything this month, just last month.
Yep, and Carrie, for strategic planning, that's been mentioned several times in the context of the budget. Speaking of quickly the budget, one thing I meant to say earlier, for those seeking, and this was triggered by the mention of the strategic plan, for those seeking a real good summary of what exactly is going on at the college and what Dr. Sagai has been stressing, achieving, it's found in the letter that covers our budget going over to the Legislature. It's the best thing you can read all year, because in one place, all the events of the year and longer term events are summarized, and it's, it's quite impressive. Go ahead, Carrie.
We don't, we didn't meet, we don't have anything reported. I just actually emailed, was emailing Gail, because I don't know when our next meeting is scheduled, but I'll get that out as soon as we do have it scheduled. I just did want to comment that I just am happy to be seeing, you know, we put all this work into developing a strategic plan and then developing our next strategic plan, and it's so nice to see it in action and coming through every part of all the actions that are being taken, specifically even the budget that came today, the student centered focus, and I know everybody's been coming together and working on incorporating all those pillars into everybody's everyday work, and it's just very nice to see.
Well, I think everyone will remember, as we get any resolution before us, there's always a tie-in to the, to the strategic plan that's specifically referred to and justified.
Yeah.
So that's a good way to manage things. Oh, you want to talk about technology? Amanda's away for a minute.
Yeah, we also don't have a report on technology. We'll do an update on Work Day at the next meeting.
It was interesting under the Budget Committee to hear It was interesting under the budget committee to hear about how we're taking some work inside, reducing reliance on consultants and so forth, that's.
That's definitely one of the most important things, I think, happening in the technology area.
Now, I don't think.
She had to leave.
Oh, she did?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. Do you know of anything coming out of that committee? Okay, very good. As far as chair report, we've had a long meeting today, so I keep it brief, and we've had Easter in the meantime, I wish everyone a happy Easter season for those celebrating that. And I feel really good about, you know, where we are, the budget encapsulates so much. People say that a budget is a statement of your priorities, and our priorities from the beginning, really well before I became chair, but certainly taken up with enthusiasm by this board, is student centric approach. And Dr. Segai embodies that, and you know, for large measure, that is why Dr. Segai sits in the president's chair, and that's exactly where she belongs. This is, we're seeing it, in Carrie's point, it feels good to see change, and we're going to keep building. Student trustee Cam is not with us today, and I don't believe Colleen Quinn is online. She's, no, okay. Senate meetings have been occurring, though.
Yes, they have, yes.
And to some extent, it ties in with our ongoing discussions with the faculty unions and so forth, there's a good forum there for people to express their concerns. Dr. Segai, I know we've had a lot of reporting in amongst all these subjects, but go right ahead, I know you normally have some wonderful visuals for us.
So this is the new location. Almost done, as you can see, we're still getting furniture and still kind of cleaning it up. It's my understanding we're about 95% completion. The part that you see where we still have some construction, that is the extended that the board approved for us to look at, opportunity for us to have a space for a cafeteria potentially and student lounge for students and also for our faculty and staff.
We had it about 4,000 square feet, a meeting or two ago, remember that?
So that's our new location, and certainly we invite the rest of the board, as time permits, we could go in, and we don't have to wear the hair hat anymore, is what they tell me, so we could go in there. We will, as appropriate, we will have a grand opening to do that, so we will have that as well. So we're very excited about this, and like I said, the furniture is on the way in terms of getting there. So we anticipate to be on time, or you know, even a little bit sooner, which is great in construction, especially with everything that's happening. So that is our new location, very excited.
I don't see a picture of the bathrooms, but they are breathtaking.
You don't see the bathroom, forget the picture of the bathroom. Jeff didn't know which way to go, he's like, is still the bathroom?
I thought it was a mirror.
It's really good.
I love that he was.
And really, like I said, the leadership, and we've been meeting with our faculty and staff, and so it's great to see the progress and great to see the location. And we also will do some outside signage and things like that to make sure people know that this will be our new home. I just want to continue to emphasize, while we're doing this work, we are still at our current location, we still have programings there that will be in there for fall, perhaps maybe all the way up to 2026. So we will have presence at our current location than we do right now, so I just wanted to be clear on that, that we still have that location going.
Part of the reason this is on time, is ahead of schedule by a lot, is that our own folks from building grounds have been installing wiring and networking and stuff and taking things off the punch list for the contractor.
And then our IT team as well.
Yeah.
So both our facility and our IT has been very instrumental in that. And just, these are just some highlights about our sport team, as you can see, we, and I met with them, you'll see also in the listening session on the other side, where I specifically, in addition to meeting with the general student population, I really wanted to also really focus on our sport team, to see their experience, a lot of them come out of, you know, from different areas, from Western New York as well as perhaps some from New York City, and a lot of them come from the Bronx where I grew up, so there's a lot of relationship there with those students. But it's really to just see what, we have roughly about 15 teams that we have at the college that we really are going to put a lot of focus on to make sure that the team is known and also our faculty and students are participating. I also had the honor to participate in inauguration with Dr. Holmes, he is the new president for Niagara Community College, and so we had a really wonderful time. I think we both have the same sort of one common theme, is that our inauguration, my inauguration, was on my mother's birthday, and his was on his mother's birthday, and his mother was there. So it was a really wonderful experience to be with them, so that was an awesome experience. And you can see, we had a career fair, River Works, our faculty, our students, our staff was there participating to some of the, a lot of the points. Not only are we doing a lot internally, but we also are doing a lot outside the college to represent the college and to be there. So a lot of visibility, you see at the same time, I think this was a city honor, I think Eric was there with his team, talking about Financial A and making sure that, as you know, this was one of the focus for the governor to make sure, and the chancellor, really to make sure that our students are filling fast food and really taking advantage of that opportunity. So Eric and the team was there representing the college.
Excuse me, Dr. Segai, speaking of Eric, I just want to pat on the back on the enrollment stabilization increase. We haven't talked enough to you about that. It's a big ship, the Titanic, you took over and you've fully coordinated with all the efforts and all the initiatives Dr. Segai's spearheaded, and it is showing, and you're in charge of enrollment, and it's turning in the right direction, thank you.
Thank you, and honestly, it's a testament of the team working together and an collaborative approach, and it's our value statement at SUNY Erie.
Thanks, Eric.
And then the open house, speaking of that, in terms of having the opportunity to get our new students, and thank you, Jeff, for bringing that up. Our focus has been and continue to be enrollment. Number one is to make sure that our current students are registered before they leave, and that has been a commitment. The college community gets an update weekly, every Monday morning, to know where we are with our continued students registered, led by Adrian on the continued side with the deans, academic deans, to make sure that we are really working hard to make sure that our students are registered before they leave. And then equally on the new students, to make sure that we're meeting our new students as they apply for the college and get accepted, that we ensure that we meet with those students and be able to get them ready for classes. And the last thing is graduation, so that is happening, I know the board got an invitation, and our theme for this year is unlocking our potential, and that has been our theme, and it's going to continue for this year, and so we're excited about that. That's May 21st at Buffalo State, and so we're very excited about that. We have a lot of applicants, what's our total number of graduates who applied?
Total applied, are eight fifty?
Eight fifty who applied, which is great, we have more that's led to graduate, but certainly those students apply to participate. And one of the things that is exciting this as well is that typically we have a theme song that we've been playing for all, you know, for a long time, I believe is the song from Rocky. That has been the case, but what we decided to do, because a lot of our students were not even born yet, so we decided to do a contest this time around and ask the graduates to pick a song that they want to walk to. So we're very excited, Courtney and under marketing with Jerome and Angelica have been doing this, so it's my understanding, we have 10 students, I mean 10 songs that were sort of the top ones, so we'll see what the vote would look like, so I'm very excited to see the theme song that they can have. We make sure the words were appropriate, so we did.
No Mr. Brightside.
No, 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 no. We did talk about that to make sure it's appropriate, but certainly we want to give our students the voice, and really this is their celebration and ours as well, so very excited about that.
Is the program shaping up in terms of speakers and so forth?
Yes, 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 and we'll get to that, and you'll get some notification, as well as student speaker that we will have, so, yeah, very excited.
Very good. Elsie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. As far as old business, again, long meeting, but it's going up the blazer, but we always want to touch base on transportation.
Transportation, we're still working with.
Yeah, I'll speak on, I have Paul. So the original schedule for the RFP to hit the street was this past Monday. Mr. Daniel had some personal matters come up, so he has not been in this week. I'm unsure whether or not that has hit the street, but if it hasn't, then next Monday we would just move the schedule back a week. So that's where we stand as far as the RFP.
This is for services to be delivered in the fall, so we're still timely, right?
Yeah, yeah, so we have also, in one of the subcommittee meetings, it came up about looking at Enterprise Fleet Management, kind of on a parallel track to see if we could take that service in-house, staff a couple of drivers, but those drivers would also then be able to facilitate and aid in the event of, you know, moving snow or whatnot with maintenance and what have you. So happy to report, after going back and forth a little bit with the risk management team from Enterprise, they would be able to give us the shuttles through that Enterprise Fleet Management system. This is the same, I'll call it network, or the same platform that the county uses, that a lot of other colleges have used. So there is the piggyback opportunity, if that is the direction that we want to go. We're at the point now, we brought it up maybe for the last two subcommittee, budget and facilities discussions, I think we're at the point now where we have our ducks in a row internally, to where that conversation could advance to that subcommittee, so, again, I don't want to get too far ahead of anybody here.
I love the sound of that.
But the individuals from Enterprise are more than willing to have a presentation as to the benefits that could be realized from going that route. I think in the last subcommittee meeting, you made the comment about, man, we really drive these vehicles till the wheels fall off or something like that. And so that's also a representation of the college, when you look around and you see, you know, Flintstones mobile, you know, you don't want that, right? And so this would be a strategic way of managing our fleet for the long term. And real fast, because I think in one of the last meetings, it's the fleet management lease agreement, and they use the term lease, but it's not lease in the general sense that we think of a lease where you don't keep your equity. There's a specific term that they have, it's a specific type of lease, where we retain any equity that we put in. So you still get your government pricing on the vehicles, but they really have the metrics in place that I know of that the county realizes, where anytime you have to procure a vehicle moving forward after your initial purchase, you can do it in a very cost efficient and effective way.
Like your point on the appearance thing, you know, and just ultimately the touchstone is what helps our students conveniently get to and from class so they can succeed.
Yeah, and the nice thing potentially about having the shuttle service be absorbed in-house would be that we would have the ability to be way more flexible in terms of the services and the time.
This is fantastic, I think it's such a huge one. This is, the transportation thing was the one thing that I brought up at the, well, it was brought up, but we discussed it, I don't know if you all remember, but this is, I think it was like my first board meeting. So to see this come full circle, I mean, this is fantastic. Transportation was like my top three concerns.
We kept it on the agenda every single month, not only here, but at the budget committee meeting, just so that we keep talking about it.
Yeah, this is huge.
Thanks, James, for your attention.
Well, thank Paul, because Paul's done a lot of the light work on it.
Thank you.
We've talked about a lot, and again, new business beyond what we've talked about. If not, our next meeting is May 29th, here's north. In due course, we should, we will be meeting at City, I noticed some of our agendas, I'm not sure exactly when that comes up, maybe in the summer, or at least in September, but...
We're doing the City, just to make sure, the City, the Skylight project will take full effect right after the semester is going to be over, we will be communicating. We did have one, two classes, I believe, there that we were able to move to Oak, so we're ready, ready to go and start the project, and the anticipation date is for us to be ready to go back in, in the fall, so we'll continue updating.
We've talked about this at retreat in past years, there's the idea of the board, we should meet at Northland, we should meet at South, the new one, and of course City, you know, spread us around, we're fine.
My team will do that.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Can we cover the ground?